Welcome to the special meeting of the South Burlington School Board. And I think we also have connected people on Zoom at this point.
Please speak up.
Do we have? Can I move this closer?
Yeah.
There, is that a little bit better?
A little.
I'll try to speak louder. All right. All right, welcome to the special meeting. And I will take comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda at this point. All right, seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item 4, which is Consider the School District Budget for FY 2021. And let me preface this by saying, the board has received a number of emails from concerned citizens about the timing of the budget revote, which is currently scheduled for April 2nd. We understand that this is creating a dilemma based on the fact that the school will be closed. Schools will be closing officially on Wednesday of this week for the period, at least until April 6th, and that the public meetings associated with budget review and approval, as well as the actual voting, would occur within the period of closure and containment that has currently been identified to the community statewide as well. So, we have asked legal counsel and to approach the Secretary of State, we've asked our superintendent to kind of look at, one, the 30-day revote period that's associated with the current South Burlington charter, which was really intended to look at, if a budget's defeated, it's intended to bring a revote to the community within 30 days, which is what informed our April 2nd date for another public vote. And the intent of that is obviously to get an approved budget by the community to continue operations of the school district. But we also appreciate the fact that during this period of confinement and containment, we've created some circumstances that may stand in the way of really the democratic process that we want to move forward with. So, we did get an opinion, and I would like to ask our legal counsel, Joe McNeil, to maybe step up here and share a little bit of information so the board can consider that and maybe deliberate how we go forward.
I think you'll be fine, Joe.
Should be fine, yeah. Thanks, Madam Chair. As you indicated, we were asked to look at the question of whether there was any flexibility whatsoever that the board could exercise with regard to holding the revote on the budget. And the ultimate answer, although it's a very close question, is that we think under these circumstances, there is a flexibility available to the board to consider a later date outside the closure and containment area. And the basis for that is really one word, the word "may." From our standpoint as lawyers, in Section 1304 of the city charter, it talks about if a budget of the city or the school district is not approved by the voters at an annual meeting, the city council or the school board may, I'm using with emphasis, submit a budget with or without change to the voters at a special meeting to be held within 30 days. It goes on to say in subsection C, that if the budget is not approved at the annual meeting and is not approved thereafter, the school board has the authority to diligently pursue, and that's the terminology of the charter, a vote at a later time. So, with the word "may," if you elect not to hold the meeting on April 2nd because of the closure and confinement situation with the coronavirus, we would suggest that you do have that authority so long as you diligently make an effort to hold a vote thereafter before the fiscal year is over. And you might want to consider it so that you could structure it so that you might have more than one opportunity. But the other thing I would say is that because this is a matter of interpretation, we asked to visit with the Secretary of State's office today, as well as the state's election officials. And I'm able to represent to you that the Secretary of State's office concurs with this opinion and with the flexibility that, as a result, the board has to have a revote after the 2nd of April. So, if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them, and you have our written opinion.
Are there board questions for Mr. McNeil? I think one of the, you know, one of the venues we have had in the most current election and for every election is the use of absentee ballots. And I think initially, we were anticipating that the use of those, the ballots, might address this concern. But I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I believe the tight timeframe between getting a budget that the board would approve to put on the ballot and the subsequent warning, which is actually on our agenda tonight, and the increase need, potential need for absentee ballots, based on some of the feedback we've been getting, but also just looking at the percentage of absentee ballots in the past election and the high percentage of turnout for the election itself, I do feel it would be in the community's better interest to try to delay a second vote on the budget at this point in time.
We also, in our deliberations on this interpretation, took into account that typically, in connection with a budget presentation or with any major question or informational meetings that are called for the purpose of explaining why something is being recommended and not recommended, et cetera. And as of this morning, we were thinking that would be limited to groups of 25. As of this evening, it's groups of 10 by recommendation from the feds and not certain what it'll be tomorrow. So, that entered into our thinking. Again, we'd emphasize that we don't think that this should be a matter of routine, that if there was not a serious situation, then our recommendation would be to act within the 30 days. But under these unique and difficult circumstances, we think you do have the flexibility.
Now, there are some ramifications of not having an approved budget, and I think the superintendent spoke to those at our last meeting, one of which is there was a delay requested by, from the South Burlington Educators Association around both a RIF or Reduction in Force notices associated with a budget that either hadn't passed or a budget that was less than anticipated in order to fund current programming, as well as issuance of contracts. And I don't know if there's other ramifications at this point that we're aware of. There's, actually, I'm sure there are others, particularly in this environment. But those were two that were specifically identified at our last meeting. Is that, that's accurate, correct?
That's my understanding, that you have, as is typical with collective bargaining agreements across Vermont, there are deadline dates by which the collective bargaining unit as a whole, and then the individual teachers usually a bit later, must be notified of first, an intent to have reduction in force, and then the actual event or notification itself. So, without that, without an approved waiver of the deadline or extension of the deadline, a failure to make that notification would mean that you would be contractually committed on the rollover to that level of staffing. So, it's a very important feature, and David took care of it with the association today.
You were able to reach out?
Yes, I was able to reach out to the union leadership and ask about, as I did before, as I reported last time, about asking for the extension to the notifying of the leadership of the South Burlington Educators Association to waive the date of both informing management of the SBA and also the individuals that would need to be RIFed. And so, they previously extended it essentially to 30 days, and they have also granted an additional extension of another 30 days. So, that came to me this afternoon after, again, inquiring about the opportunity and options to do, as you have heard Joe discuss.
Okay. Are there board questions, comments?
I mean, I would like to just indicate that, you know, this is not without concern because if we get to a point where we don't have a budget, we can likely lose anyone who then says, "I'm the least senior teacher," or teachers, all the way up a pretty significant list, and they say, "We're going somewhere else," right? And that then has major implications on the refill of those positions on those that may be not eliminated. So, it creates a lot of, what I would say, turmoil in the organization. Again, I think this move helps quell some of that anxiety, but the time, the time limit is still there and evident.
So, David, do you have a recommendation for us about what we should do about the date?
Yeah, I think that it makes sense, given the conditions that we, the condition that we're under currently connected to coronavirus. I think the ability or inability for the public to weigh in on where we currently are, I think this meeting is an example of that. We've done everything we can to open up channels of information around Zoom and RETN being available. We know that we do have, on a regular basis, pretty good followership from RETN and their FaceTime Live, I think it's called. And we recently opened up the Zoom component, and we'll likely keep that going for a lot of our meetings that we need to have kind of offline. And it may be negotiations, it may be admin meetings, it may be teacher-to-teacher meetings, et cetera. So, yes, I am in favor of the recommendation. So, I know that Donna Kinville, city clerk, has reached out to the Secretary of Condos to try to delay this as well. She has big concerns about proceeding because of the coronavirus on the 2nd. So, I think the fact that she really is concerned about this, and this would give more time for her to figure out some alternatives if we still need to have social distancing by the time we have to vote on this, I think it makes a lot of sense.
All right, so, this was warned for action to consider the school district budget. I think there's still opportunity for some discussion, although I'm not sure our administration has had an opportunity to further look at making recommendations around the budget. But why don't I pause for a minute and see if there are any comments from the public on the discussion so far?
What is the new date for the, the extended date for the teacher's notification?
I think what the superintendent just said is that they've given a waiver for an additional 30 days past April 15th, which would be the issuance of contracts, David, is that correct?
Yeah, so it went from, it went one month from April 2nd to May 2nd, and from April 15th, again, notification period, giving actual RIF notices from April 15th to May 15th.
So, the notification of RIF is the first step, right?
Yeah, we got to notify the union. And the second is, we actually have to deliver the RIF notice. So, that moves out essentially 30 days from April 15th to May 15th.
So, presumably, you need to have a voter-approved budget by when to meet that date?
Well, we'd like to know before that date so we can appropriately issue contracts in accordance with the adopted budget. If we don't have an adopted budget, then we have to assume, you know, whatever the board's next step will be on another revote. But we also have contractual obligations where people will say, "I'm not going to wait around," you know, and they look for other employment. So, that's a little bit of a risk.
It sounds like we'd be targeting in early May.
Correct.
To take a budget to the community for approval.
Yep. Yeah, probably. I mean, ideally, it would be right around, you know, kind of that May 2nd, 3rd. I don't know exactly where that falls, and I think, as Martin referenced, we need to work with Donna and our clerk to figure that out.
And hopefully, we'd be through the closure and containment period, but as Martin mentioned, that would give our city clerk an opportunity to look at alternative ways of voting that might secure folks who wouldn't, were not able to be in a public setting. I do have the, yes, in the back here, John.
I'd just like to address the superintendent's comment regarding the risk of losing teachers, which I acknowledge is probably real. However, as a nation, we're entering a macroeconomic period of potentially grand dislocation across the workforce. So, unemployment is going to rise across the board likely, if you're paying attention to what our national leaders are saying. In an environment like that, I'm not sure that there are that many additional employment opportunities. So, I suggest that we keep that in mind as we enter negotiations. It's what our corporate entities are doing, it's what other public entities are doing, it's probably what South Burlington should be doing as well. John, stand.
Thanks, John. I do have a question from Gwen Burns. It says, "The impact of the state taking over healthcare costs on the FY 21 budget starts January 2021. Details of cost per employee FY 20, first half FY 21, second half FY 22. The questions are, do they have any flexibility in spreading the healthcare costs beyond FY 21 so that we don't take the full impact this year? Second question is, is there any contingency built for the healthcare cost increase? And third question is, when would the board negotiate components of healthcare costs for the next contract, meaning copay and deductibles with the union?" And I'll respond briefly. Right now, the statewide contract covers the period that was indicated here with status quo till the end of this calendar year and going into effect FY 21. So, do they have any flexibility in spreading healthcare costs? At this point, we are aware of a 12.9% premium increase that still has not been approved by DFR, who is the oversight organization, and that would take full impact this benefit year. Is there any contingency built for the healthcare cost increase? That's generally, that is based on the prior-year plan selections by individual employees, and that's how that's budgeted. So, there really is not a contingency. And then lastly, when would the board negotiate components of healthcare costs for the next contract? And that is no longer negotiated at the local level, that's negotiated at the statewide level. And given that the current statewide award by the arbitrator goes through calendar year FY 22, I'm looking at, I'm looking at Mr. McNeil, that the negotiations would start a period of time prior to that to address any of the items associated with healthcare premiums and copays. Any other questions from the public?
I guess, yes.
Would you, would you mind coming up so we can hear you and the folks on the, who are up by Zoom? I'm sorry. And John, I should have asked you, but I hope the mic picked you up.
And before you ask, are these questions specifically on what you're referring to right now about the delay, or are they on the budget?
This is specific to the discussion we just had on the delay, correct.
Well, that's what I'm wondering about the delay as well. Maybe I'm not understanding just what you're proposing by suggesting that the vote not occur until sometime in May, the beginning of May. I think that's what I'm hearing. So, what sort of efforts will be made by the board and by the public to collaborate with each other in order to know what each other's thinking and how the increase or decrease in what your proposal, how that will show? I mean, I was planning on coming tonight to indicate my concern with the last meeting's decision to make it only 1.1% less than what the initial proposal was and everybody voted for and came through, you know, on voting day. It was defeated, and I'm here to say what I think about even last week's proposal. So, when will I get a chance to let you guys know what I'm thinking about your proposals?
Can I just be clear, because I was in the chair seat last week, there was no decision made last week.
No, no.
There was discussion.
Discussion. Excuse me, I didn't say the word "discussion."
Yeah.
Last week's meeting indicated that you kind of came down to, you kind of shaved it down a little bit, about 1.1% from what was initially in.
And we asked David to bring other items for discussion this week as well. So, there was no decision made about what was going to be taken.
I didn't say "decision." What I'm indicating is that I feel as if we all need the opportunity to be able to discuss, further discuss, what were the numbers, and when will that opportunity take place if we have to wait until May to do so?
Yeah, well, we can segue into that right now.
Okay.
Because that's a good opportunity to talk about considering the budget for FY 2021. And what we did indicate is, I don't think administration has had an opportunity since our last meeting Wednesday to bring another layer of potential reductions or recommended reductions to the board. We do have another meeting warned for this Wednesday, and I don't want to presume what administration has time to do, given that we're trying to look at continuing education for our students who will not be in the school facilities as of Wednesday. But this is an opportunity for those of you who are here and those of you who want to participate by Zoom, as well as, we need to preface it with a discussion by the board about what additional questions have come up since last week and any further direction for administration. But if you don't mind holding right there, we'll have that board discussion and then open it up a little bit for feedback from the community. I think what we also have said is that there will be additional opportunities, albeit perhaps in different venues. For instance, I'd certainly continue to encourage emails and phone calls, but also, should we continue to be having public meetings if people can't or choose not to participate within the meeting itself? We're going to have venues like Zoom and through RETN as well. So, we'll make sure, and if there's anything new that comes up that's better, we'll investigate that, too. So, relative to the budget, David, do you want to give a quick update on, again, where the thinking is since last meeting?
Yeah, so again, thank you, Elizabeth. Again, I and administrators have not had the amount of time between the last meeting and today, given all of the things that have been going on. That said, we have done like a quick, kind of broad brush of where the next steps would likely fall. Again, I want to emphasize, we're currently at a 9.83 tax rate increase. I do want to inform the board that four percentage points of that are related directly to your city and your CLA, which would make it a 5.83% increase if you zero that out, and I know that's not appropriate. I think it's important to know, as a result of increased growth, it's a 1% part of that, adding some of its staff to accommodate that. And then, the other part is, obviously, we're making up some revenue shortfall. So, when you take those, kind of those two other additional percentage points, you're down to a 3.83% when you kind of take those factors out. And as you know, healthcare is upon all of us, and as you read the question, Elizabeth, earlier, certainly, healthcare is upon us all. We hope that that will steady itself out for not only the school employees, but the entire state. And so, that's kind of where I see, we're at a 3.83 in kind of an overall run rate, which I think, you know, is still concerning, but I think it puts it in kind of perspective. As we go further, and again, that's what the board asked me to do with the administrators, and we haven't done a broad brush. Again, I personally, this budget represents what I believe allows us to meet the ends, outcomes that we, that you've outlined for me to adhere to from academic to disposition to personal development and citizenship outcomes. This budget represents a budget that will allow us to do that. If we need to go further, then I'll be looking at those things that are not required. And I will be looking at, you know, broad brush areas, and again, I don't have exact, and nor do I want to scare, you know, a lot of people, this is not the time to do that. But we would be looking at transportation. You know, transportation is not a required component, with the exception of vocational, technical education and special education. That's close to $1 million that we put forward. We think it's appropriate and needed, particularly on equity and a variety of pieces. We would be looking at all of athletics and activities. Again, those are not required, but again, I believe they're critical to our ends. That's over $1 million. We have support systems associated with our learning, with literacy and math. We would be looking at those areas. We probably would be looking at alumni and development, dropping those, again, not required. Some of our mentoring-associated programs, again, not required. So, those would be kind of the quick broad brush that we did. I know that's not the level of detail that you want, but we would be looking hard at all of those things that are not required and probably would be prioritizing them accordingly to stay as far away from children. So, it's not necessarily in an order, but those were the things that we administratively, entire administration, district, and that was not certainly an easy conversation to have. I think that changes significantly the complexion of your district or our district and the viability for its, you know, to continue to thrive and be a place where people want to move, kids want to move in. We probably would see a pretty significant, you know, change in our growth, probably. I don't know.
So, before we get into board questions or guidance for David, I do want to, unless we have any other questions for Mr. McNeil, just thank you, and if you don't need to stay, then welcome to leave. Thank you for the assistance today. So, David, it sounds like the focus has been on, not, on a little bit of discussion with the administrative team has been those items not required. Is that at the, as directed by the state level? Is there a common screen there?
Yeah, so, there's requirements that we need to adhere to, obviously, you know. Again, I think administration can also be put in this bucket, too. It's not required. You don't need a principal, I mean, you don't legally need an administrator to be in your school, so those would be other areas. But there's just that broad brush on what's required and what's not required. And, you know, I think we would also be looking at overall just enrollment factors. We have, I have interpreted the board's policy around enrollment guidelines, enrollment policy. I look at that kind of by school, and I don't look at it by all roll-up district, because I think it's, it would be, it's unfair to do so. I think it's, you asked me to carry out that policy, and I look at it kind of on an individual grade basis, based on the school in which the students are currently coming to. So, I may, again, that may be put in a priority of looking at that to elevate those numbers, which I don't think is necessarily advantageous. So, there's a broad brush of options here, and to say that I've done a lot of diligent prioritization. But obviously, as we go further with budget, you know, looking at further areas, I just don't have a lot of other areas that I can touch upon right now that, without going into that.
So, practically speaking, we will be meeting again in two days, and it sounds like there's a fair amount of work that would have to go into triaging that list.
Yeah.
And our next scheduled meeting after that is?
Two weeks from Wednesday. Yeah, and I think, and I think the question, Madam Chair, I have not had this conversation with you, but I think our Wednesday meeting is, could be, should be done by phone only, probably, to just do the approval business work, because I think that we're in this containment period, and I think the same reason that you're kind of talking about where we are related to the budget, I feel like we need to be sensitive to community's ability to come out to that meeting and our ability to get out, communication to. to come out to that meeting and our ability to get out, communication to get people to it. I think there's a big worry that most people weren't able to be here tonight, probably, because of that, even though we tried to extend out invitation. And I think that won't significantly change between, you know, today and Wednesday. So I'm going to suggest that we postpone the, cancel the Wednesday meeting and figure out, you know, how we need to at least sign certain orders that you need to sign.
So we do, we do have another three-hour window.
Yeah.
The following week.
That's right.
I'm looking at, I mean, I'm thinking about the delay and the amount of time that we would have to allow for discussion. And we haven't set a firm date, but I think we've talked about that early May timeframe. We should be backing into what work needs to happen in order to warn that appropriately and, you know, engage the public appropriately prior to that, then.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, it's a little, there's a little bit of a blip in our schedule. We don't have an April 15 meeting, which we might normally have. So normally, we have April 1st and then April 15. There's no meeting scheduled for that. So it would have to be, we would need to add some special meeting, a meeting or meetings, I would think, after that, because we have one on April 1st and April 29th. And neither of those is really going to work, because April 1st is still within that containment period, and the 29th is much too close to a May 2 vote. So we'll have to figure, we'll have to think about that carefully.
Delana is here, but she's in the back. So I think, again, we would need to work on, you know, just the reschedule of some of these meetings. But I'm going to tell you, not much is going to change for me. I don't think with, I can't right now bring administrators anymore together. We've met numerous hours on just trying to deal with the containment. And I've got that all day tomorrow. We've got all day Wednesday just to try to figure out that, you know. So I'm not going to have much more time, and I got staff tapped out right now. So.
A week from Wednesday? Is that doable?
Yeah, I think giving me some more lead time than this Wednesday to be able to give you more detail is fine.
Because, I mean, I also understand the suggestions you've made, but I do want to see where there can be a cut on FTEs and understand what that might do in the elementary schools as far as class sizes, where there might be any flexibility that we may have to accept larger class sizes. We may need to accept certain classes not being offered at the high school, et cetera. I want to at least be able to look at that and consider that.
Yeah.
So.
It's not an easy thing with increasing enrollment and increasing participation in some of those classes. We got, we're on the upward piece, and we, I was pretty conservative in even putting in, I didn't know that we put enough in at the high school for even a .8 add based on the enrollment projections, actual enrollment going to happen next year with the largest eighth grade going over there. So we've got some pressures right now around enrollment. I hear what you're saying, so I'm not trying to rebut that. But I think there's some real realities facing South Burlington, different than any other community around growth.
Alex?
I was wondering, you know, if we're not going to, if we're not going to approve a budget for tonight, what would be the timeline for doing it? Could we table it till Wednesday? Should we schedule a meeting for next Wednesday?
Well, we have, we have one scheduled. David's recommending we cancel this Wednesday's meeting.
Yeah, okay.
And that we could hold the meeting on the, on the following Wednesday. We have a three-hour block scheduled for a working session, but hold that meeting but remotely, or at least by some other venue that's effective to exchange information, have discussion in a public forum, and then the possibility of scheduling other informational sessions. But what Bridgette has suggested, we really, April, the April 1st meeting, is that when we have one?
Yeah.
Would be probably too early to potentially approve, or to have.
It would be ideal if we had a budget approved. But it would be too early to have an actual in-person public meeting based on the April 6 motion.
So we've got, and then the next meeting until the end of April. So I think we, I think we'll need to, one, understand what the closure containment, you know, landscape looks like in the April timeframe, but really look somewhere between, somewhere after April 6, probably, when the current end date is scheduled for closure and containment, that we would look to have public meetings and approve budget.
Right.
For warning then.
Yeah, you're getting, you're getting at where I'm going. I appreciate that this little-known codicil allows us some flexibility in going beyond 30 days, but I don't want to take advantage of it. I'd like to, I'd like, you know, the intent of it was for us to get a budget going as soon as possible, and I still want to do that. And, you know, if, you know, if we can do it, you get working on the board approving a budget for the voters sooner than later. I would prefer that.
Well, I think, I think we'd all prefer it in terms of certainly the implications we've said for staffing and for contracts and RIF notices. I think the challenge is unique in this particular case. And I'm sure the charter intended both municipal and school operations to have a voter-approved budget to continue those operations, but the budget doesn't go into effect till July 1 either.
Oh, I know.
So from that standpoint, I think, again, it's a tight timeline, but it also respects the closure containment guidelines we have right now and still allows for both board and community discourse around, around a budget.
Yeah. So closure containment at this point ends when again?
April 6.
April 6.
That's what they're saying.
That's what they're saying. I mean, who knows? Right.
That, we believe that will probably change. You know, we're getting pretty regular updates. I mean, Elizabeth preference one earlier.
Yeah.
That, you know, some guidelines.
Yeah, it would be nice if we could get a vote in April, if at all possible. I don't know if it's possible. It doesn't sound like there's, maybe I'm being too aggressive with the timelines, but.
I just think it's very difficult in terms of warning dates, because we know that for the April 2nd date, we needed to have warned the ballots by, by the 18th of March at the very latest, which is why we were having this meeting tonight, because there has to be enough time that ballots can be printed for absentees and mailed out, that ballots can be printed just for the regular election, that all the election staff can be organized so that there can be a proper election. And I, I'm just not seeing how we're going to be able to have a real, despite Zoom and, you know, all the things that we'll try to put in place, I don't see how we're going to have a real public discourse kind of meeting with additional recommendations from David and the administrative team until the, like, the second week of April at the earliest. So I don't understand how we could possibly warn something within the month of April that's really appreciably different than the first week of May, which is what I think we've been talking about. I just don't think once you back into it from starting with an election date to, you know, where that meet, or going forward, from where the first possible public meeting could be after, assuming that April 6 really is a final date. So we've kind of been told to close schools until April 6 and be prepared that that could be extended based on what we see. So I don't, I don't see a physical possible way to give people enough warning time to actually have a vote in April. I think all of us would love it if we had a budget earlier than that, but I just don't see how that timing works, given where we are with coronavirus.
That may be one of the things we need to ask administration to do is sort of back into what the dates would need to be and then when there could be meetings, whether they're, you know, online or otherwise. I think we're all recognizing a need for further discussion and input from administration to get to what we believe would be a budget we can agree upon and take to the voters, inclusive of feedback from the community as well. So I think it might be helpful if we ask David for next week's meeting to really outline what the critical dates would be for both meetings and then for warnings and so forth, assuming that we'd be looking at an early May timeframe.
Well, I think we also need to understand what kind of flexibility we may be able to have to have an authorized public meeting under open meeting laws that is through Zoom or something like that. And I know that that's an issue that's being addressed elsewhere. We can make sure. We may have to have a public meeting that, that people are not in the same room. That, we should, we should plan for that possibility as well.
I'm curious, too, if, or if you're now talking about having the vote early May and you need to notify the union mid-May, what happens if the May vote doesn't pass? Then what?
Yeah, we have, we have a question, if people can't hear, a question from community member, sorry, your name?
Margot Rogers.
Margot Rogers, on what would happen if a vote did occur in early May and the budget was defeated a second time. And I do think then we'd be looking at RIFs and preparing for level funding, I would assume. Is that accurate?
That's correct. Under the charter, it would be level funding. So exactly where we are today, which obviously wouldn't keep staffing levels at where they are today, because there's increased costs, as I've outlined earlier. We'd have to make those, we'd have to make the reductions.
Well, and just to be clear, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean we would.
Doesn't mean it happened.
It doesn't mean we have a level-funded budget. It would mean contractually, we'd be obligated to provide the reduction in force notifications and start to operate that way or prepare to operate that way. But our, our goal under state statute would be to diligently pursue getting a voter-approved budget, and that, that can go to a third vote at that point. I do have a question. Any other board comments at this point? I'll just read the one here and then open it up to the public. From Gwen Burns, "There's no reason the board cannot continue to meet and discuss the budget via Zoom or otherwise. The containment period is going to go longer than we all think, and the wheels of government need to keep moving." I think that's the discussion we're having right now, is how can we comply with law, open meeting law, public sessions, and still complete the work that we need to do under the current situation? All right, I'll open up for public comment, actually, as long as you're there.
Thank you. I'm Annie Lou, and I don't know.
They can hear you fine.
They can.
Yep.
Well, I'll just say what I was going to say, because it applies whether the vote is April 2nd or May 2nd or beyond that, because of what's going on out there in the world. I'm going to read tonight because I don't want to miss anything that I intended to talk about tonight. I thought tonight was going to be the night when you all would make the decisions. I, you know, it's been a full week since we had the last meeting, and I thought you were coming down to maybe some sort of a, an answer as to what your budget was going to be proposed. And that's what I was here to talk about tonight with you, hoping that it would be down to a level that was reasonable. But here I go. The coronavirus is nothing like we have ever faced before in our modern economic times. There has already been and will be devastating financial losses throughout the entire nation, including into our small city of South Burlington. These are true financial losses that may never be recovered. Families are already facing a long list of economic catastrophes, not being able to pay bills, losing employment, having to pay for much-needed health insurance should they lose their employment, providing food for their children, potentially losing their homes, extreme debt, bankruptcy, disappearing retirements in the stock market right before their very eyes. Many of us can no longer be consumers. We must now be survivors. We have already been witnessing consumers in our city focusing on survival spending habits. Go to the grocery store right now down the street from here, and you're going to witness exactly that firsthand. We can no longer continue to raise school spending that results in unaffordable taxes. Your initial proposal for a 7.96 school budget increase, leading to an 11.22 tax rate increase to us taxpayers, it was outrageous. The city could see right through it and strongly voted no. Then last week, seemingly with great sacrifice and extreme difficulty on your part, you managed to whittle it down to, down a meager 1.1%, expecting us taxpayers to still be willing to absorb a nearly 10% increase in our school taxes. It was nothing short of an insult to this entire city. It's time to get real. When I look at your pathetic attempts at reducing the budget, I feel that the school board and the administration are acting more like vultures rather than representing the taxpayers' interests like you are tasked to do. Why did our school system have to request the highest percentage increase in Chittenden County? Other schools in Chittenden County seem to be willing to ask for reasonable increases, and they were approved. For instance, Burlington's budget passed with a 3.18% increase. Essex passed with only asking for a 0.89% increase. Colchester's taxes will only be going up 1.1% overall. As a matter of fact, Vermont State had actually given guidelines to all schools recommending that they seek no more than 5% spending increases. I and others wonder why you didn't accept the state's advice of staying under 5% for your first budget proposal. Other schools managed to do it. Why didn't you? It may have made the difference between your budget passing and it being defeated the very first time around. This city has been extremely generous to the South Burlington school system over the years, but we no longer have the ability to provide the luxuries that we so openly-handedly bestowed on our schools in the past. People are awake now. No one feels secure in this economic disaster. No student will suffer if your final budget gets cut to no more than 1% this year. If you choose not to hold the budget to a reasonable, sustainable, and affordable level, however, there will be much suffering among the residents of this city. I personally feel that the board should simply decide tonight, and maybe not tonight, maybe closer in April, you should simply decide tonight to move ahead with near-level funding, or at the very least, carve it down to a degree where the only increase from last year's budget reflects the extra amount needed to comply with the new statewide health insurance requirements, perhaps 1% tops. A level budget wouldn't be the end of our students receiving a good education. It would be an opportunity to tighten your belts, just like all the rest of us. Stop the waste, get creative for the next year, and make do during this time when we all feel so vulnerable.
Do you want to leave a copy?
I can.
For the board, that'd be great.
If you have the ability for me to, yeah, I can leave a copy, sure.
That'd be great. Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Right here.
Would you mind?
Right here.
So my name is Margot Rogers, and I am originally from Iowa. I grew up there and moved here right after I graduated college over 30 years ago. I've lived in South Burlington for 25 of those 30 years. I have three children, all of whom have spent their entire educational lives in the South Burlington School District, two just graduated last spring, and the last is in, is a freshman at the high school now. And over those years, I have paid little attention to the, the school board process and the budgeting. I pretty much rubber-stamped the budget as it's gone on. Occasionally, my eyebrows would raise at some of the things that happen, but for the most part, I rubber-stamped it, and my bad for being complacent about it. Recently, however, with these increases that have seemingly come or been communicated what feel to me like at the last moment, and it sounds like we're talking about doing the same thing again, last moment, with such an enormous. the same thing again, last moment, with such enormous increases, I'm now paying attention. I'm now paying attention. And thankfully, I've led a comfortable life and probably have sufficient funds to absorb this or the, this and/or the bond vote. But the reason why I have those financial resources is because I don't spend money and increase my spending like this board seems to be doing. I don't know if the citizens of South Burlington are aware, but Vermont's, Vermont per pupil spending for education is the fifth highest in the nation behind only New York, Washington DC, Connecticut, and New Jersey. We are 52% above the national average for per pupil spending in this state. What's different, though, about Vermont than those four other states who are higher than us is that those four are among the top five earners and per income, per capita income in the country. Vermont, though, is not in the top five of per capita income, even though we are the top five spending. We are right at the national average, just below the national average in terms of per capita income. So all the other four who spend the most money also earn the most money, but we don't. We spend 52% more than the national average in this state. With the coronavirus that's coming around and has these devastating impacts, with the cost of living adjustments that are increasing only at 1.6%. And oh, by the way, I, my degree is in accounting. I worked at a CPA firm, a nationwide CPA firm for six years. I now work as a designer of healthcare financial software, so I'm very well aware of the financial aspects of the health insurance industry and the cost, rising costs of healthcare. That said, it's just shocking to me that this board would even consider, particularly in this crisis that we're on right now with the coronavirus and the financial impacts that it has, with, the board would even consider the kinds of spending that you're proposing right now. I know that a small group of community citizens have offered some suggestions about how to get this budget down to level or 2% to 3% increase like all the other towns around. I'm not sure, and my question really is, what have you done to review that and to take into consideration those spending? And just as a personal statement, I don't know why we aren't talking about streamlining and cutting programming or streamlining programming in the schools. I don't know why we can't, why that can't be on the table. So what have you done to review and consider the suggestions of the community that we've put forth?
Yeah, I think we're in receipt of several suggestions that are offered by the community and administration has those and will look, will look for the discussions and recommendations of administration first to inform the board where that makes sense and where, and how that impacts, you know, educational programming and how it might have some benefit to look at those and where there might be some collateral impact of some of those suggestions, too. So we do appreciate receiving those.
Yeah. From my perspective, cut administration, not going to hurt the students, even cutting programming, it can be done. The rest of the world, corporate America, cuts spending and we can do it. So from my perspective, seeing these proposals of just outrageous and unleashed spending is just, it's not sustainable. We already spend 52% above the national average already in this state. There is no reason why this can't be lower. I grew up in Iowa. They spend, their average income is very similar to ours, a little bit less, and they are below the national average and their statistics are perfectly fine, very well in line with ours. There's no reason why we can't get these numbers down. So that's what I have to say.
Thanks, Margot. I don't disagree with some of your statements about certainly at the state level, we do spend a lot on per pupil spending and that is at the state level. It's part of the education funding formula we have, and I know Mott Pilier is looking at that and how we, how we fund education within the state. I do think one of the challenges we have is really both the education funding formula but also the, the programming that's offered across, across the state and the, the ability to really look at where there are sustainable reductions. I, I come from, just on a personal note, my professional experience was largely in the corporate world where there were levers that you could pull, that you could manage budgets a little more effectively. I will say it's been in education over my tenure on the board that there are requirements associated with federal and state law that you, there are obligations we have within the school district to provide services that are non-negotiable in many cases. So it's a, it's a challenge.
But there's plenty of waste, plenty of waste in it. And plenty of opportunity, in my opinion, to coordinate and, and look across the, the school districts like you do with BTC and the Essex Technical Center and things like that. Phenomenal programs that are coordinated across the schools in this county, in this county and the region. Do more of that to cut the costs.
Other comments?
Elizabeth?
Yes.
I just have a clarification. Can you tell me what the contractual obligations are with regard to contracts with teachers? I'm not looking for confidential information. I'm just looking for concept step increases, et cetera. What is the base contractual obligations you have when you meet with the SBA? Or can you go with, can you just go in there and say, "We're not going to offer any increases whatsoever"? Or do you have these contractual obligations with the SBA?
In terms, Jerry, of the, I'm sorry, for, for those that, on Zoom, Jerry Silverstein asked the question about contractual obligations with the Educators Association. When you enter a negotiation, there's, there's, both parties can bring to the table any item that you want to negotiate. There are state statutes regarding collective bargaining that need to be followed by both parties. Within the current contract, there are horizontal and vertical steps and typically on a year-to-year basis, the vertical step, no, I'm going to get that wrong, horizontal steps are automatic in that those are tied to education level and the years of service. And there's a salary schedule that's available with the steps that's publicly available where you can see that. So those are the salary components of that. And then obviously, there's a series of benefits and other working conditions that would be within a contract.
So for FY 2020, could you tell me what percent increase in salary expenditures was due to those contractual obligations of how much, how many years of education, what the seniority level was? Is it 2% or is it 3%? Is there a number? In other words, you would go in there knowing, no matter how aggressive I am, I still am going to be responsible for a 2% or 3% increase in salaries?
Yeah, typically, that would depend on the cohort of, of the group and that rolls over year to year. So you would look at sort of how many folks at different step levels, so junior level, senior level, and so forth. But the automatic step component would be approximately on an annual basis about 1.5%. Other questions from the public? Yes, would you mind coming up, John?
John Stern, ooh. John Stern, good evening. It's wonderful to be here in this warm, beautiful building with you this evening. The, I'd ask a question that I think you probably know what the answer is, but $11.5 trillion, that number means, it's the amount of money we just lost in this nation, in the equities market since February 19th. Let that sink in for a second. $11.5 trillion. And we're a little worried, I'm, I'm hearing language coming from our super, not from you, to be honest, but from our superintendent, that worries me. And it worries me because we're talking about the fear of slight hardships. This nation's going into a recession or a depression. $11.5 trillion. We're going into deficit spending. We're going to zero interest rates. Oil industry is going to tank. Other industries are tanking, layoffs across the board, and we're worried about a few teachers. Those teachers should be happy, in my opinion, that they've got employment. And we should be providing that message as a community to everybody. It's the lesson we should be teaching our children. We've been through this before. We've been through the Great Depression in this country. We've been through wars. When things like this happen, these are extreme times and maybe God, I pray, South Burlington won't be affected by this the way other parts of this country are. But we should be prepared for it because you're talking about a year-long commitment, as I understand it, on the budget. We need to be prepared for what may happen to South Burlington. I'm talking to small business owners in this, in this city who are looking at going out of business very soon because national companies are cutting contracts. National companies are stopping hiring. They're stopping spending. Michigan and other states have shut down businesses. We may not have done that yet, but it may be coming. And when that happens, I think a, a budget that goes above what would otherwise have been the national standard for raises and budget increases just seems irresponsible to me. The language we need to be using right now, not just containment of a virus, but containment of greed. If our teachers want to walk out on our students in this point in time, I say let them. If, if, it's incomprehensible to me that we would think anything but that right now. We need to come together as a community. They need to be part of this. We all need to be part of this. I encourage you to use language of courage and strength in this, in this time. And let's get through it together. There's always next year. Thank you.
Thanks, John. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be remiss not to say our staff, our teachers have been an incredible asset, particularly as we've gone through the changes in how, figuring out how we can deliver education as we move forward over the next period of time up until April 6 and potentially beyond. So none of them have, all of us, none of them included, have not been involved in anything like this before. And we're, we're asking a lot in, in terms of making sure that our students move forward in their public education. And I do want to acknowledge that effort and that hard work, too.
I think that's wonderful. It wasn't the language I was hearing at the start of this conversation. And language like that is very important. So I think we need to be publicly sharing that information because it just gets some of us a little bit emotionally revved up otherwise. And I apologize for that. I don't mean to get emotional in this, in this period. I think we should have a rational discussion, but these are emotional times for a lot of us. I had another statement. I've forgotten what it is. I'll send it by email. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, John.
Elizabeth, I would say, again, I echo that. Again, courageous teachers and administrators. I mean, when most other employers are off, we have asked them to come and work and put together things and they've been, they've been courageous to be in place and they've been working diligently hard. And I think that's to be so noted at a time when others are, you know, companies are not having people come. We, we've asked the teachers to come today and tomorrow. And so again, I want to echo, you know, sentiments that you say that, again, they are, they are doing what I would say very courageous work and I appreciate that.
Other comments? Yes.
My name is Denise Walter. I want to thank you for the difficult position that you've been under the past couple of days trying to get the school organized for the containment situation. That cannot possibly be an easy thing. I am sincerely disappointed that we don't have dollars and cents to address this evening. And I would like to echo Mr. Stern's comments in that we are all undergoing a very serious financial time. And I think that like healthcare workers, teachers are always going to be in need and they're dedicated individuals. And I think that knowing that there would be a job for them might be incentive enough to hang in and work along as we all get through this very difficult process. Mr. Young, I really implore you to reach high for that fruit that you need to pluck because we cannot sustain an unaffordable budget for the citizens of this, this city. I am a new resident here. I moved just 18 months ago, so this is all very new to me. But I do sincerely implore you to, you know, reach for that fruit like we discussed last, at the last meeting. We, I think this community wants to have a good, decent educational program, but we can't be paying for every star that goes twinkling by. We have to get down to the bottom line. We need to tighten our belts and we need to find creative solutions to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe I, when, when, when Mr. Young was counting down the dollars and removing some of the numbers to get to 3. whatever percent, I look at it the complete opposite way. You start at 3% and you build up to it and including, including some deficit spending that we have to make up for. Deficit spending was spending against last year, not this. It hurts us this year. It's probably time to make up for that. So I understand the rationale of coming down, but I think it's sophistry and I think it's actually building it up from our perspective. The total number is what the total number is being presented as regardless of how we get there. It is the total number. It's not less than the total number. It is the total number. So just beg you to remember that, or actually, don't beg, I ask that you remember that in your deliberations. The total number is the total number regardless of how we get there. And prior decisions impact where we got today and the decisions we make today will impact where we are tomorrow. There's only so far you can kick the can down the road. Thank you.
I have one more comment, too. The additional comment I have is that we all know that there's maintenance needs that these schools have. We all know that. We all recognize that. And we're going to have to pay those, at least those. I know there's a request for a new school. That's one option. But in any event, there's more money that needs to be paid than is included in this budget. This budget is for your day-to-day operations of the schools over the next year. But the elephant in the room is there's more money that needs to be paid. And as a citizen, those are in the back of our heads and they need to be in your day-to-day lives, too. My house is getting to be the point where it needs a new roof. The school needs a new roof. It's not that I can just keep spending the same amount that I'm spending and then, huh, I don't have any money to pay for the roof. Well, that's what we're doing. If we continue to just accelerate and increase these budgets so significantly, we're not going to have any money to pay for these necessary maintenance and repair and whatever. So just consider that. I mean, that's the elephant in the room, people.
All right. Any other questions, comments? So we've, we're in effect, I guess I'm looking for a, do we have to take a motion? Because we warned, we warned action on considering the school district budget. And based on the prior conversation, I think the general consensus is that we believe to allow for the confinement and, or closure and containment period of time and additional discussion among the board and with the community that it would be better to delay that to the early May timeframe. So I, can I get a motion to agree to delay considering the school district budget?
Can I pause on that just a second? We've heard some great comments about cost containment and so, and so on. Would anybody like to chime in on the delay that we're considering?
We, we had that discussion, Alex.
I know, but I want to hear from other people, too. I mean, we've heard a lot about cost-
I mean, we've heard a lot about cost containment, you know, from them. Go ahead, John. Thank you.
Whether others agree, sorry, whether others agree with me or not, I happen to believe it's the right thing to do. I think we all need to focus on priorities right now. One could argue that politically rushing something could be beneficial to one side or the other, whatever that means, but I honestly believe, taking a pause here, giving you folks time to think through the numbers, I, I understand the pressure Mr. Young will be under negotiations, but it sounds like they gave you some leeway and I think we could all just take a little bit of a breather and think through things, allow for more of a dialogue. So I support it. Thank you for asking the question.
Sure. Thank you for chiming in.
I would say the same.
Thanks, Margot. Thank you.
Okay. So do I have a motion to table the school district budget to a future board meeting?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? And we'll do a verbal vote because Brian Manier is on the phone. Martin?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Brian?
Agreed.
And the motion passes. So I do not believe we need to consider Agenda Item 5, which is the special meeting warning that is warned for action, but by default, we won't take action on that this evening. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brian? We are adjourned. Thank you all.